Welcome back, Mr. McDuffie.
Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro-Ten, City Council Members, good evening. My neighborhood friends and property owners have spent countless hours investigating Davis Road, starting with a birthdate, talking with county executives, searching public recorded documents, visiting title companies, conversations with old timers who have been here for years, and now I have to ask for your help. We cannot find any conclusive evidence concerning dedications for Davis Road conveyed to any agency in Yolo County, including the city of West Sacramento, who reports having the dedicated documents in hand but has not shared them with the public. Davis Road is a seven-foot levee road, seven-foot height and elevation in parts of Liberty Island. This confirms flood protection measures were put into place. Davis Road and Liberty Island's environmental impact report has a width of 50 feet. This is not 50 feet wide, it's closer to 26 feet wide. Next to that lies an existing 115-year-old permanent drainage ditch. The reclamation district drainage ditch serves both sides of Davis Road, absorbing leaching storm water from adjacent acreage and seepage from the setback levee running along Village Parkway. Under Resolution 0663, Paragraph 3, Section F, it clearly states that the city shall maintain rural residential and open space buffers between villages. Residential rural and rural estate zoning designations are not to be converted to urban density residential designations. You cannot penetrate a buffer protection zone with a roadway through it linking two major subdivisions together. That totally defeats the provision. We have this safety measure. This is a property right that cannot be extinguished or altered. Liberty Island has east and west streets that you can access directly onto the city property described as the Antioch Trail. It possesses recorded dedications. Respectfully submitted.
Thank you, Mr. McDuffie.
Robin Davis. Hello, I'm Robin and I live in my 160-square-foot semi-off-grid tiny home on wheels on my undeveloped residential property here in West Sacramento. I'm excited for this new year and the new tiny home on wheels ordinance to come back to you, council. We still appear to be on schedule to return next month. We continue our collaboration with Daniel in the planning department to bring an amazing and informative presentation back on the agenda. Daniel has consistently been open and responsive to our questions and suggestions for this ordinance, and we appreciate him for this. In other housing news, according to a federal report, the number of homeless Californians increased by just over 3% in 2024, and unfortunately, that has obviously increased due to the devastating fires in SoCal recently. Homelessness nationwide increased by 18%. So the goal for this year is to continue to advocate at the state level to not only legalize tiny homes on wheels, but for more incentives like grants and programs for individuals to build their own affordable, diverse, innovative housing where tax dollars go straight back to the people. Also, to continue to advocate for banks to create financing options for primary tiny homes on wheels to assist with the upfront costs of this type of project. All of this could be, could help and be another option for fire victims while they wait for insurance money or who have lost their insurance completely. Looking forward to all the ways we can continue to work together to make housing more accessible and efficient for all.
Joe Cattalago. Good evening, Mayor Guerrero, members of the West Sacramento City Council, staff and audience, Michael Barnbaum and Mayor Guerrero. Per your request, I'm returning to City Council to present an update on activities happening at the Yolo Transportation District and those that impact the city of West Sacramento in particular. First, let me go back in that in December, there was a very interesting matter and discussion about the Woodland Transit Center, which could impact schedule, timing, and route alignment of the 42A and B in West Sacramento. All of us spoke with a unified and united voice against a transit center over at the Costco location by Road 102 and Interstate 5, and united in our voice to focus on a housing project in Woodland called Yolano Donnelly and downtown Woodland around Second and Court Street. On that note, there will be an open house on Tuesday, the 28th of this month, from 7:30 in the morning to 12:30 in the afternoon, where the district will present what a simulated transit center for downtown Woodland would be like at the intersection of Second and Court Street, if you wanted to put that on your calendars. In the month of January, the big topic was the introduction of the Short Range Transit Plan and Transit Planning 101. In the long-range calendar, the district is going to discuss the Woodland Transit Center again in February, update and possible action on preferred site for inclusion in an AHSC or Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities application, and possibly bring that back in March with possible action to approve the MOU for Yolano Donnelly AHSC application. So a lot going on on the Woodland Transit Center. But in February, and this is pertinent to West Sacramento, there will be a service to Sutter Health Park for River Cats and A's 2025 baseball season update. Leading up to that, this Sunday, is the service restorations on weekday service in West Sacramento for routes 40, 41, and 240. These routes primarily serve both the cities of West Sacramento and Sacramento via the Tower Bridge. So that's so far the update. So again, I cordially invite you to the February 10th, 6:00 PM meeting of the Yolo Transportation District, in which the service to the ballpark will be the main topic of item of discussion. That concludes my report. If there's anything to add, I turn it over to YTD Chair, Dante Early.
Wonderful, thank you so much, Mr. Barnbaum.
Thank you.
Thomas McDuffie. Welcome back, Mr. McDuffie.
Yes, he did. Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro-Ten, City Council Members, good evening. My neighborhood friends and property owners have spent countless hours investigating Davis Road, starting with a birth date, talking with county executives, searching public recorded documents, visiting title companies, conversations with old timers who have been here for years, and now I have to ask for your help. We cannot find any conclusive evidence concerning dedications for Davis Road conveyed to any agency in Yolo County, including the city of West Sacramento, who reports having the dedicated documents in hand but has not shared them with the public. Davis Road is a seven-foot levee road, seven-foot height and elevation in parts of Liberty Island. This confirms flood protection measures were put into place. Davis Road and Liberty Island's environmental impact report has a width of 50 feet. This is not 50 feet wide, it's closer to 26 feet wide. Next to that lies an existing 115-year-old permanent drainage ditch. The reclamation district drainage ditch serves both sides of Davis Road, absorbing leaching storm water from adjacent acreage and seepage from the setback levee running along Village Parkway. Under Resolution 0663, Paragraph 3, Section F, it clearly states that the city shall maintain rural residential and open space buffers between villages. Residential rural and rural estate zoning designations are not to be converted to urban density residential designations. You cannot penetrate a buffer protection zone with a roadway through it linking two major subdivisions together. That totally defeats the provision. We have this safety measure. This is a property right that cannot be extinguished or altered. Liberty Island has east and west streets that you can access directly onto the city property described as the Antioch Trail. It possesses recorded dedications. Respectfully submitted.
Thank you, Mr. McDuffie. Robin Davis.
Hello, I'm Robin and I live in my 160-square-foot semi-off-grid tiny home on wheels on my undeveloped residential property here in West Sacramento. I'm excited for this new year and the new tiny home on wheels ordinance to come back to you, council. We still appear to be on schedule to return next month. We continue our collaboration with Daniel in the planning department to bring an amazing and informative presentation back on the agenda. Daniel has consistently been open and responsive to our questions and suggestions for this ordinance, and we appreciate him for this. In other housing news, according to a federal report, the number of homeless Californians increased by just over 3% in 2024, and unfortunately, that has obviously increased due to the devastating fires in SoCal recently. Homelessness nationwide increased by 18%. So the goal for this year is to continue to advocate at the state level to not only legalize tiny homes on wheels, but for more incentives like grants and programs for individuals to build their own affordable, diverse, innovative housing where tax dollars go straight back to the people. Also, to continue to advocate for banks to create financing options for primary tiny homes on wheels to assist with the upfront costs of this type of project. All of this could be, could help and be another option for fire victims while they wait for insurance money or who have lost their insurance completely. Looking forward to all the ways we can continue to work together to make housing more accessible and efficient for all.
Joe Cattalago.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Joe Cattalago with Waste Management. Just here tonight to introduce Ben, Ben Raffielli. He's our new recycle coordinator for the city of West Sacramento. He is our, a new member of our team. This is a new position we haven't had before, so we're really excited to have him on board.
We have to get along, and you have to listen to us. But I don't like to be called names at my age, and I'm not talking about any of you. Talking about people that work for the city that don't agree and they're not on the same page. That's all I ask, is a little bit of training. And for the last thing, I'd like to say, God bless all the people in LA. I feel really bad for them, and I hope that they recover. And so, I'm just letting you know, when I come in here, all I want to do is address these things, but I don't want to be called names when I'm leaving. You know, my daughter come to me and said, oh, that lady called you an ass. Really? They have to have training on how to deal with the public. Thank you very much, and God bless each and every one of you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. That's totally unacceptable that anybody would call your names or anybody here in the room, so that is completely unacceptable.
I agree, because you know, why do you come in here and they may not agree with you, but to call you names when you're walking out?
Thank you. Thank you for letting us know.
We have no additional requests to speak.
All right. And on that, we have our consent agenda items two through 13. Are there any requests to remove in an item for questions, presentation or anything? No, at this point, I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Early moves?
Second. Okay, Mayor, temporarily moved, and Councilmember, I'll call the second, and Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sepiezio Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Rockola?
Aye.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Early?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. These items are approved, and congratulations to all those that are here. Thank you for coming tonight. Next is, under our public hearing agenda item, is Item 14, under Community Development. Is public hearing and consideration of First Reading of Ordinance 25-1 regarding proposed amendments to Title 17 zoning of the municipal code to create the Grand Gateway Zoning District and related action. We have two people, Jaiheil Budget, Mark, okay, and I also have Daniel Burrman. All right, please present. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Mark Paul Hemus, Community Investment Manager in the city's Economic Development and Housing Department. Tonight, it's my privilege to present with my colleague, Daniel Burrman. Also, I would like to acknowledge the work of my colleagues in the community development and EDH departments for their work contributing to this item to create the Grand Gateway Zoning District and related items to streamline future redevelopment of the Grand Gateway area. Grand Gateway area reflects the importance of the city's incorporation in 1987 to bring local influence and action to resolve the negative consequences of historical infrastructure and land use decisions that have had a century-long impact on our community. Since, we've been able to reconnect portions of our city that have been bifurcated by State Route 275 and work towards its transition to a thriving urban community. This item builds on the success of the Grand Gateway Master Plan, an advisory document that was adopted in 2013, which influenced the development of the West Gateway Place Apartments, the completion of transit, pedestrian, and cycling improvements, and tonight's action will assist future redevelopment of the remaining Grand Gateway properties comprising about eight and a half acres. Sorry, I miss this one up often, so let me figure out which one goes next. There we go. So tonight, staff recommends the following actions are taken by council to assist staff in continuing our work, including conducting this public hearing, find that the Grand Gateway Zoning District is consistent with the general plan required for zoning amendments, find that the Grand Gateway Zoning District project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15183 of the SEQA Guidelines, and conduct the first reading of Ordinance 25-1 amending Title 17 of the municipal code regarding creating the Grand Gateway Zoning District and related actions. Tonight, I'll describe how the adoption of the new zoning district fits with the city's past and future work in this area. My colleague, Daniel Burrman, will present to you the details of the requested actions, including the proposed zoning code updates and environmental analysis that has been commissioned to support the SEQA analysis. To address why staff is recommending these actions, this is an important step to help address the ongoing state and regional housing crisis that has made housing unattainable for thousands. Adopting the zoning district will simplify the planning and development review process for the Grand Gateway area, originally located in three distinct planning areas, all with different planning and review standards. This adoption will create singular and consistent standards for the future build-out of the remaining portion. Additionally, this will help the city bring Grand Gateway current with other city actions that have been completed since the master plan was adopted in 2013, including a comprehensive general plan update in 2016, among other planning document approvals, and it will incorporate additional parcels the city has acquired to expand the Grand Gateway opportunity. Our efforts have been recognized by regional and state partners, as SACOG awarded the city a planning grant using state funds to conduct this work and to help the city streamline development that leads to housing production in infill areas. Shown here is a high-level timeline of key actions the city has conducted to redevelop the Grand Gateway area. This encapsulates 30 years of strategic investments in planning, property acquisitions, infrastructure improvements, and site remediation to transform this area into a high-density mixed-use community that will contain hundreds of residential units and other urban uses, furthermore supports our ongoing work that we're, that we're currently working on and will be doing in the next several years. So to demonstrate the significance of the city's actions here, I'll highlight two images to show how far we've come in 30 years. In 1993, Grand Gateway was chopped up by State Route 275 on and off ramps, making much of the space undevelopable. Through our work, we freed up several acres of previously unusable space to what it looks like today. Now, we can extend the city's urban fabric from the urban, sorry, from the bridge in Washington districts to West Capital and the Central Business District. Again, all this is possible through the city's persistence to plan, acquire, remediate, and repurpose the land to its exciting future. And so how does this fit to where we are today? In July 2024, the city entered into an exclusive negotiating agreement with the development team after issuing an RFP to develop the remaining Grand Gateway properties subject to the Surplus Land Act. The selected project considers the development of over 400 units, with 25% of those units being affordable to lower-income households, a hotel, retail space, a parking structure, public plaza, and other amenities. The city's ENA with the prospective developers stipulates that the city will complete, will prepare various planning, environmental, and mapping activities. This item addresses two of the three main objectives of our city's responsibilities. City staff is currently working on the third main objective, to prepare a tentative subdivision and final map for the project area, which will be, which will be completed in spring 2025. And so this concludes my portion of the presentation. Senior Planner, Daniel Burrman, will take it from here to highlight key policy updates associated with the proposed zoning district.
Thank you, Mark. So why are zoning code updates needed? Well, it's partially to clean up overlapping development standards found in the governing documents, which are the Grand Gateway Master Plan, the West Capital Central Business District Design Guidelines, and the Washington-specific plan area seen on the right. As council is aware, the Grand Gateway development is noted in the current strategic priorities for 2024. Staff recognizes the importance of this streamlining effort, laying down the framework for future growth in this area of the city. The new Grand Gateway, or GG Zone, replaces the existing Grand Gateway overlay zone found in Title 17.16 of the zoning code. This new zone also is intended to supersede the other plans mentioned for this area. In accordance with the municipal code and state land use law, zoning code amendments must be consistent with the general plan. The proposed Grand Gateway Zone aligns with the Central Business District land use designation. It's found to be substantially consistent with Goal LU-5 of the general plan. Goal LU-5 promotes the development of unique higher-density and intensity of mixed-use districts and corridors that provide civic and cultural activities, including a range of residential, retail, and employment uses. Along with the action of creating a new zoning district, the city intends to remove parcels from the Washington-specific plan area. This formal action will take place during the Washington-specific plan update, which staff anticipates coming to the city council this upcoming spring. On the left-hand side of the screen, you can see the zoning and land use map. The Central Business District land use is shown in the dark red or maroon. The light industrial towards the upper-left is in purple, and the waterfront land use is depicted in dark blue. The new GG Zone is highlighted in yellow, which comprises all of the parcels in the new zoning district. In regards to the GG Zone, the proposed changes are centered around uses that align with the Grand Gateway Master Plan to better promote transit-oriented development with high-density living. The new zoning framework would support mixed-use developments, enhancing both accessibility and connectivity. In comparison with the CBD Zone, some of the changes being implemented include increasing the minimum density of units per acre from 20 to 30, increasing the minimum floor area ratio from 0.3 to 0.75, and allowing a higher maximum building height proposed to be at 90 feet. This adjustment will serve to increase the capacity of the area relating to both housing and retail. The changes do not exceed the limits outlined in the general plan, but do serve to maximize potential for development density. The complete list of amendments can be found in Ordinance 25-1, found in Attachment 2 of your agenda packet for this item. As for the California Environmental Quality Act, this project is exempt from SEQA review pursuant to Section 15183, which allows for a streamlining environmental review process for projects that are consistent with the existing zoning and general plan policies for which Environmental Impact, or EIR, was certified. For more detailed information, you can see Attachment 6, which is the 15183 checklist prepared for the zoning district. We also have Matthew Gurkin with AECOM who prepared the SEQA document if there are any So with that, staff respectfully recommends that the city council conduct the public hearing, find that the Grand Gateway Zoning District is consistent with the general plan as required for zoning amendments, find that the project is exempt pursuant to Section 15183 of the SEQA Guidelines, and consider the first reading of Ordinance 25-1 amending Title 17 zoning of the municipal code regarding creating the Grand Gateway Zoning District and related actions. This concludes our presentation. Both Mark and I are open to any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Open it up for council to see if they have any questions. We will comment. Just a quick, Councilmember Rockola? Thank you. How are we letting the public know? What kind of notices are going to go out? That's often been something I've heard from the public, is they don't get notice. So how are we doing that?
So we did a, I believe it was a 500-foot radius notice for this, for this item, and we also put a legal ad in the newspaper about, I believe this was in late December.
Okay, thank you. I'll open up a public comment. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
We have no requests to speak on this item.
We have the applicant and the team here, would they like to speak or write any comments?
This, this action is, is clear, it's a more planning process. It does not have direct impact with necessarily, you know, the, in terms of the, I guess, the while it does facilitate the implementation of the development, but yes, we would certainly welcome comments from the project development team in terms of how this could facilitate their vision, both that the city and that they share.
Thank you. With that, I'll close the public comment and bring it back to council. Are there any questions again? All right. Thank you so much for all your hard work on this, and at this point, I think we need to take action for approval. Oh, sorry, you have a comment?
Yeah, sorry, it wasn't a question, it was a comment, but I guess it'd be a questment if that's.
Yes, councilmember, please.
No, I just, it's incredible. I've been sitting on this dais for the last, going on nine years almost, and incredible to see the flashback of where we've been. These things are happening incrementally, so oftentimes they escape our acknowledgement as we drive past, we see the improvements, and we do a ruin-cutting here and there. But to see the future in, in our hands and on the screen of what the area will potentially look like in the complexion, the improvement that we get to look forward to, it's just astronomical. I think that our community is going to be very excited, if they're not already, to see what the potential holds, and I'm really happy to see the, our family here that is working very hard on this plan, every meeting and event to ensure that they're available and, and these plans, and I know that this is essentially, like you said, it's not necessarily the unveiling of the grand master plan, but these small steps, even seeing some of the developments that we've had over the last few years come to fruition now, it is a very exciting time. And so I'm, and I just wanted to add, Daniel and Mark, thank you very much. Very succinct and efficient presentation.
Mayor Pro Tem? No. Make motion. Oh, and I just, I did, thank you so much, councilmember. Just to add, I think we have, you know, to, just to top it off, you know, just all the hard work in all these years to have, you know, an applicant who is here to do incredible work and meet what, what our requests were to, you know, this part of the city, the Grand Gateway, which is going to be the entrance of our city for people to see, and to continue the incredible progress that we will see with the, with the team that's going to build it to, for the vision that we had hoped for all these years. And so moving along, and just had one question. What is the next step in this process, besides this, besides it coming back and approving it after the next time, after that?
So we have, after the zoning district adoption, next step, we are going to be preparing, there's title issues with property that exist on the land from when it was a state route, so we're going to be bringing forward subdivision and subdivision, sorry, tentative subdivision map to the planning commission for their consideration, and that, after that is approved, it will go to a final map for council's consideration. That'll really make it more shovel-ready. We're still in the ENA. Once we define terms specified through that ENA, the next step would be entering into a disposition and development agreement with the selected developers, and at that time, we would know what the, the potential development would look like in every, you know, all the unit counts and everything that would be included with that. So that is, we're working towards that this year.
This year, all of that?
The DDA, and then after that, it's, you know, obviously a phased and multi-year, you know, development process.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
So we need the motion, right? Want to make sure. So early moves, the staff's recommendation.
Early moved, and Councilmember Roscoe, second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sepiezio Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Rockola?
Aye.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Early?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. All right, thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. Next is Item 15, under Community Development. Is a public hearing in consideration of Resolution 25-8 to vacate public right-of-way known as Middle Avenue, located at 600 Sutter Street? Okay, Mark?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This item seeks your approval of the abandonment of Middle Avenue. Middle Avenue was initially dedicated to the county of Yolo in 1927. It was never improved as a public right-of-way or road. There's no public need from a circulation or a utility service standpoint to retain the right-of-way. The right-of-way bisects a large piece of property located at 600 Sutter Street, and the owner of the property is asked for the abandonment so that he can make full use of the property. Council approved the Notice of Intent to Vacate on November 20th, and subsequently, all public know- all public notifications required by the state and city code have been adhered to. Public hearing is the final step in the process of abandoning the right-of-way. Have any questions you might have?
Are there any questions among the council members? Well, let's open it up to public comment. Clerk, are there any requests to speak on this item?
We have no request to speak on this item.
Close the public comment, bring it back to council. I'll call a move. Early second. Okay, council member Alcala moved, and seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council member Sopizio Hall.
Aye.
Council member Alcala.
Aye.
Council member Roscoe.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Early.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye. All right, thank you so much, this item is approved. Next, we have our regular agenda item, consideration of approval of an updated administrative policy, 9-a-2, do I have to say Roman numeral nine? Park and facility naming. And let's see, would you have, you presented, thank you. Peter?
I'm just waiting for the presentation, but yeah, good evening, mayor, members of the city council. My name is Peter Ibrahim. I am the capital improvement manager with the capital projects department. And tonight, I will be presenting revisions to the park and facility naming policy, also known as administrative policy IX-a-2 for the city council's consideration and approval. So before you is the agenda slide. We will be going through the background, proposed updates, and then going through the general naming and renaming criteria, the renaming process, additional considerations, commission feedback that we've received from PRIS, and recommended action and next steps. So a little bit of background, as part of the annual strategic planning process, the city council provided direction to staff that the park and facility naming policy should be updated. In reviewing and updating the current policy, the objective is to combine both parks and facility naming into one policy while incorporating best practices for an equitable and intentional naming framework. Historically, park naming has been a separate process from facility naming, and has occurred as part of the development process. The current process for renaming a park allows residents to complete an application, after which the application is reviewed by the Parks, Recreation, and Intergenerational Services Commission with final approval from the city council. Now, this administrative policy was formalized in August of 1998 and revised in August 2004. The city council also had requested that the update to the policy include the representation and land acknowledgement of the local indigenous tribes. So I'll go through some proposed updates. The formal name of the policy is to be modified to Facility Naming and Renaming Policy. Also transferring the approval authority from the city manager to the city council. Facilities included in this policy are city buildings, parks, bridges, overpasses, trails, and other related public amenities and locations. The inclusion of a general naming and renaming criteria which ensure that names, which ensure names reflected reflect the city of West Sacramento's diversity, equity, and inclusion, prioritizing local significance while allowing names with broader California or national relevance if linked to the area. So staff included a general naming or renaming criteria, and selecting the name for a city facility, the following criteria shall be used. And the criteria that is seen on this slide and the following slide are not listed in any particular order, and a minimum of one must be met for renaming or naming. So a geographic location such as a neighborhood, significant area, a park feature, which could be a natural, constructed, wildlife, lakes, memorial, an adjoining subdivision, street, school, or natural feature, commonly recognized historical event, group, organization, or individual, whether living or deceased. So continuing on, individuals with significant accomplishments that have been, that have benefited the community, individuals who have provided exceptional service to the city, an individual or an organization that significantly contributed to the acquisition or development of the facility may be considered as well, and names that acknowledge and represent local and or local indigenous tribes. So the initiative, the renaming process can be initiated in two ways. If it's a city council-initiated process, the city council would initiate park or facility renaming by requesting it on a future, future council agenda item. The renaming can be initiated either by the council directly or through a community request submitted to a city council member. The city council may approve the renaming at the meeting without community or commission input through feedback, through feedback can, or sorry, though feedback can be desired or gathered or desired. Now, if it's a resident-initiated renaming process, a resident can initiate a facility renaming process by completing the facility, city facility naming application and submitting it to the city clerk's office, who verify for completeness and forward it to the city council. If it is supported by a city council member, it would be added to a future agenda item. The proposed name will then be discussed at a later city council meeting where the council will decide to seek community feedback. The council may approve the name without input or choose to gather feedback at a council meeting or from the community. If feedback is requested, the community relations team will handle outreach, and the PRIS commission will review the name or facilities under the Parks and Recreation Department's jurisdiction. Now, back to some feedback. The collected feedback will then be presented at a city council meeting where the city council has the final authority to approve the name change. Additionally, the city clerk's office will screen nominations for appropriateness, ensuring that names are free from conflicts or vulgar language. Go on to some additional considerations. So again, as, as I mentioned before, the city council has final authority and may override staff or commission decisions on naming or renaming of a facility. Renaming on school property requires approval from both the city council, the Washington Unified School District Board of Education. An initial naming may be initiated by city departments adhering to established guidelines and criteria. Renaming requests may be initiated by the city council or residents through an application So on December, on Tuesday, December 3, 2024, staff presented these proposed updates, and the following feedback was provided for the city council's consideration. First, there was a suggestion to explore a weighted system to prioritize key aspects of applications or recommendations based on their impact or importance in the decision-making process. Additionally, concerns were raised about the current application process lacking sufficient community involvement, which could lead to conflicts. It was recommended to incorporate some sort of mechanism that encourages applicants to engage the community, ensuring local concerns are addressed. And lastly, there was an emphasis on enhancing community awareness and involvement, ensuring that residents are informed and have the opportunity to voice their concerns before significant decisions such as name changes are finalized. So with that, I conclude my presentation. If there are any questions from the city council.
Any questions among council members? I do have one question. When we take a look at vetting the process, for example, like Baldwin Gateway, there, there was a significant number of members from the Afghan community. I don't know what their language was, and I think that we needed to make sure that that was vetted in their language. Is there a way to, you know, process that in multilanguages, especially among those that are in the close proximity of where the location of the name?
Yeah, I would say that we would, if, if community feedback is required, then this policy would then take it to the community relations team to ensure that, you know, the language accessibility of that neighborhood is met.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
We don't overlook that.
Definitely.
Yes, and then if there's a, I don't recall a street name change in this discussion, this is just facility, so that makes it a lot easier, right?
Correct.
All right, that's half. No other questions? I'll bring it back for, bring it up for public comment. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
We have no request to speak on this item.
And if council's okay, we'll accept a motion to accept the recommendation is provided here. Early moves? Okay, council member, Mayor Protem Early moved, council member Roscoe seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council member Sopizio Hall.
Aye.
Council member Alcala.
Aye.
Council member Roscoe.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Early.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye, thank you so much. Thank you for all your hard work on this agenda item and getting this process. Next is item 17 under the city manager's office's consideration of council committee appointments. Madam Clerk, would you like to do a presentation?
I don't think we have a presentation, but just a quick reminder that as part of the concurrent special meeting, we also have the appointment of vice mayor listed, so we would, we would advise that you would do this at the same time. Could be in any order, but it makes sense to do the vice mayor appointment first and then do the council assignments after.
Okay, we'll take up consideration of selection of a mayor Protem, and I do like to recommend council member Alcala for Mayor Protem. And what else? Like to consider other options, if there are other options?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead.
Please.
All right.
So I would like to recommend council member Sopizio Hall. I think the leadership that we saw during measure O, I got to, I got front row seats to that, and it was nothing short of remarkable. We know that despite the cost and the investments that were made there, that in Folsom, there were significant dollars spent, and their measure did not pass, and I think that's a really good example to know that none of these things are guaranteed, and I think that measure is largely because of the work that council member Sopizio Hall put forward, and so would love to recommend her.
Yes, council member Roscoe.
Thank you. Over the several years, I've had the opportunity to sit amongst several iterations of this council and have been pleased with seeing the leadership of, of several fellow leaders. I've been very impressed by the way that my colleague Ms. Sopizio Hall has managed to become not only our newest council member, but also the ability to multitask and to take on so much new information and to digest it in, in very, in ways that she can help regurgitate it to people in the community who don't necessarily hold the same type of platform that we all do, while at the same time energizing to raise both infant and toddler and growing family. With that stated, I couldn't say it better during this last election, not only withstanding the pressure by folks in the community who might not have a lot of the information about what, what it is that our council is standing for, but having council member Sopizio Hall take the leadership and actually take not only credit but responsibility. So with that, I would, that motion as Mayor Sopizio.
All right. Thank you so much. And just to add the comments, you know, from my recommendation, council member Alcala has been an extraordinary leader for, for her community, making sure that we establish bright park in the forefront on the council agenda and securing, you know, the funding that we have to make that reality happen, where her district did, did, did the, an enormous amount of the approval of measure O throughout the entire city. It was her district, and it was her commitment to make sure that her community was aware of the impact that would have, and the assurances that she would continue to focus on that, which continued to place her on council to see, you know, that dream become a reality for the city. So I just want to make sure that, you know, our community is aware of her leadership and, and the contributions that she served for her entire community as well. And just. Well, mayor, I just want to second your nomination as I did last year. You can just go ahead and take a vote. Right, since you've seconded, and that was the first, I will ask madam clerk for picking up Mayor Protem, council member Alcala.
Council member Sopizio Hall.
No.
Council member Alcala.
Yes.
Council member Roscoe.
No.
Mayor Protem Early.
No.
Mayor Guerrero.
Yes. And that motion has failed, and now we will take up council member Sopizio Hall as Mayor Protem. Next up, madam clerk, please call the roll. Oh, and we have a first and a second, Mayor Protem Early first, and council member Roscoe seconded.
Council member Sopizio Hall.
Aye.
Council member Ros, council member Alcala.
No.
Council member Roscoe.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Early.
Yes.
Mayor Guerrero.
Yes, and I'd like to congratulate, now Mayor Protem Sopizio Hall. And if you'd like to switch the seats.
Are we switching?
Yes, please.
I packed all my stuff up and everything. I literally was. Unplugging.
We can do it at the next meeting.
Okay.
We can do it at the next.
It's up to you.
All right, we go.
The name tags will match then, next time.
And next, under item 17, is the city manager's office's consideration of council committee appointments. And at this time, we have the committee roster and presented before you that I would.
I'm stealing it.
Okay. And so there, I've reached out and hope that we are all here in approval of the recommended actions that we currently are, current positions that we currently have. I would like to proceed in getting that.
I just have one comment?
Yes.
Yeah. So, CACOG, and I, I have been very fortunate to be your alternate for the past year?
No, two years. Okay.
Oh. Um, and we have a lot of overlap with both YTD, now CARDA, the Transportation Committee, a lot of what we are working on at the, at the board level on CACOG is a lot of what we are doing here and the assignments that I have. And so I would ask for CACOG that I no longer be the alternate, but actually be the primary.
Okay, I, I would like to continue to be the primary. And you have had the opportunity to fill in quite a, quite a few times. You know, we do switch around, make sure that coverage is there. So I would like to keep that myself as a.
Yeah, I appreciate that. For me, for good governance, I will, will take up the vote and all the things, but for me, it would be a no, because I think it's really important that, that I move to that, at least over the next year, as we are facing so many big projects in regards to transportation that align with all of my other assignments.
Yes, good to know. And just to clarify, Mr. City Attorney, on this is the requirement for the vote?
There is a requirement for the council to approve vice mayor, or mayor Protem.
We did that already.
Oh, council, I'm sorry, yes. It is also a requirement that the council approve council appointments. The, the way the ordinance is written, you, you make appointments, the council confirms. If the council fails to act within a period of time, and I think it's 30 days, or then the appointments go into effect, but the council is.
So we need a vote to confirm the appointment. So you keep your, may I get clarification, mayor? So the mayor just wants to remain the primary, and unless she says something else, she doesn't have to make consideration of changing as the primary, is that correct? These are her appointments, we just simply need to ratify?
Well, she, no, she has to make the appointments.
Of herself.
She can appoint herself.
Right.
I mean, but that would be something that would be voted on by the full.
Okay. In order for it to be ratified?
Correct.
Okay. So if it's not ratified tonight, I mean, if the votes are not there for tonight, then what is the?
It depends if the votes, if there is a, a majority no vote, then you'll need to do new nomination.
Okay, all right. With that, then that's the, okay, so my recommendation is to be CACOG, and you do have the transportation component of, so with that, madam clerk, is there?
May I, yes, chat about CACOG real quick? Obviously, it's, it's an important appointment, and being in the room matters. I guess, council member Early, you're attending when the mayor cannot attend?
Yes, so I, what we have done, and I think we've got a fairly good cadence, I think what happens. what happens, though, is that a lot of our offsite meetings, I'll go to those, and the onsite when, when, where I attend those, where... So, I think, at least for me, in regards to the governance part, and why I'm saying I think this is important, particularly over this next year, a lot of the work that we are doing that matters, at least to our city, is in Yolo 80, so the expansion. I am the Vice Chair of the Capital Area Region Holding Authority. CACOG actually staffs CARDA, so again, a lot of overlap in regards to our Transportation Committee, not just the Committee on CACOG, but also YTD. So I am now Chair this year of that district as well. All the projects that we have significantly overlap with the work that's happening at CACOG. Bear in mind that at CACOG, transportation is not the only thing that is happening, but over this next year, we have quite a bit for that impact West Sacramento. And so, I'm saying no, because that I think it's important that the governance, in regards to the overlap of all the other assignments that I have, that it's important that I be there because of that. Otherwise, it would be a yes for me, by the way, right? As it's been a yes for me the past few years.
Yes, and there have been quite a bit, like you mentioned, of other activities, such as the diversity, equity, and inclusion. There's also been a discussion on the funding rounds, and those are subcommittees that I have been participating in and helping out with. So there are, and then the bike sharing, you know, committee that I am on as well. So there are a number of other subcommittees that, you know, we all participate in, which I've been able to... I think having two people participate in this role has been helpful as far as representation.
Agreed, and the only reason I bring it up this year, so one, I think you're absolutely correct in regards to the funding rounds, I think we have now adopted all of that great work that you and your committee led, and I think that's important. STIP, actually, as you heard Mike say, on our YTD conversations, what we were talking about there at YTD related to CACOG and actually the funding round, and how we would go about as Yolo County, as YTD, and really as West Sacramento, in trying to be at the table for those dollars. And so, so much of the work that I'm doing on YTD, that I'm doing on CARDA, relates to the work as it relates to West Sacramento. A lot of the CARDA, the Yolo Transportation, a lot of that work are big dollar ticket items for West Sacramento. Again, I think DEI is crucially important, and appreciate the work that you've led there.
Yes.
Absolutely, the funding round, and now that that has closed, and that was important work, and I'm glad that you were able to represent us on that, I think over this next year, West Sacramento is going to need to have that level of knowledge across all of those different points that we have, and they're, again, they're big ticket items for us. That is, that is the reason why I've said I think that's important, just from governance perspective.
Understandable, and in the last cap to cap, I did help in representing West Sacramento on the CACOG Transportation Committee when it came time to advocating for our bridges, our other transportation, you know, proposals that we have put forward. So on that effort, I did contribute in our cap to cap. It's important for us, as we are doing this on the ground, and you're knowledgeable, to do the advocacy at the federal level.
Just can I add?
Sure.
I wasn't going to actually make a comment about this, but to me, I've heard, I'm not part of CACOG, I've never been a part of that committee, but I am, I work very closely with our colleagues around the region, and I've heard a lot of feedback about West Sacramento's participation in those committees, and have heard a lot of great positive feedback about Councilmember Early's attendance and participation, that she, as the alternate, has probably attended more meetings than our actual appointed member. So I, that's all, I want to make sure that we're actually represented at the table with the people who are doing the work.
We are.
And...
We do cover it.
But that's a thing, Madam Mayor, with all due respect, I mean, to give credit, just a moment ago, to somebody, when not acknowledging, who actually did the work, Emiliana Rosas, when he actually went and canvassed for Measure O in District One, and that's what brought out the voters. I mean, we need to make sure we're actually telling the voters who it is that's doing the work, and so I just want to put that out there, that we want to make sure that if Dante Early is actually going to these meetings and showing up and participating, actively advocating for on behalf of West Sacramento, I want to make sure that she has the ability to represent in such a way.
Mayor, may I?
May I, please?
Sure.
I also advocated for our measure, you have no idea. So, to make comments like that, you know, is just...
So, I would move a second that if there was a...
And incorrect.
...motion for Ms. Early, I would be on that.
I do want to keep the Measure O thing off the table here, we want to focus on the discussion for these appointments, so with that, are there any other comments, or, you know, everybody's pretty much had a chance to speak about this? I'll accept a motion for my recommendations first, and then we'll move to the next, I'll accept the second?
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. It's my, I put forward the motion, and then Councilmember Akala seconded.
Councilmember Sopizio Hall?
No.
Councilmember Akala?
Aye.
Councilmember Roscoe?
No.
Council... Mayor Pro Tem early?
No.
All right, it is next, putting Councilmember Early for the CACOG, and you're going to cover all of them, that we are in DEI and the bike sharing and everything, okay? So we will need to make those changes.
Unless you would like to be the alternate and cover the DEI, I mean, we could still have, where I think is important, is the Board of Directors and having that continuity.
I prefer we have the continuity all the way through.
You're good, I have no problem covering all of them.
Sure, that's fine.
Okay.
And with that, a second?
A second.
I'm going to get the new titles right this time. Councilmember Akala?
No.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Sopizio Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. All right, these items are approved, thank you very much.
Just a quick recommendation here, so we would advise having an alternate for CACOG, given the importance of having representation there.
Yes, I'll, I'll, we'll keep the alternate for CACOG, yes, I'll... Yes, I agree, that's a good point. I'm glad we did it. But not for the DEI, that's, that was...
I promise you, I'm good.
So I think that's what I meant, is not that for, for the council member to hold on as the lead for all of them.
My recommendation is to have an alternate for the actual board meeting.
Do you need me to...
The alternate?
Yes, just the alternate. Do you need me to make that motion that...
I think that would be best.
Okay, so I would make a motion that our mayor be the alternate for CACOG.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Akala?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Sopizio Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
All right, next, we have function part two, do we have reports from council assignments?
Yes. There are actually two meetings from the Sacramento Area Sanitation, Sec Sewer Board, we changed our name recently, so we're now Sacramento Area Sewer District, and recently began meeting as a board, and I know I've talked about, we used to be Regional Sand and Sec Sewer back in the day, we merged, and this is important, because now West Sacramento actually has a seat at the table, as opposed to just an adjunct member. We did discuss a lot of matters, I won't go through all of them, I will say that the most important is the, the, call it SLRAP, it's the Rate Assistance Program, we've been talking about this for quite some years. West Sacramento is treated a little differently, because we don't have SMUD, and that's normally, they use SMUD information in order to determine where people, where the need is, as far as where low-income rate payers might be. Thanks to both my advocacy and County Supervisor Oscar Villegas, we are going to be using our PG&E data in order to help connect our rate payers with this program, and to try to get the word out, because frankly, we all know that PG&E is going to be raising its rates, we have all had different rate increases across the board in our households, and anything could help our residents when it comes to fee reduction. So, we, I think today, I got called by the Director to see who it is in our, in our city who can help with outreach to our community, and making sure that our folks know in language-appropriate and culturally-appropriate ways, how it is that they could benefit from this very valuable program. Other than that, we received a variety of different updates on the progress of our recycled water project, for lack of a better way of putting it. We, we take water and we recycle it for the use of props, and it's one of the most innovative ways that, it's a model throughout the nation, and I, you know, this is a, for anybody who ever wants to go and see the Echo Water Project, it is an absolutely incredible investment. Nobody wants to talk about what really happens when we flush our toilet, but in all fairness, you know, the fact that West Sacramento has a seat at the table, I think next year will be voted, will probably be up for the position as Vice Chair if, well, West Sacramento, regardless of whether or not that's me or not, and it's really great to see this come to fruition on budget and on target, and the, our city benefits greatly. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other updates? Yes, Councilmember Early?
So we met with Yolo Transportation District on Monday, and it was a really good conversation. One of the things that I had advocated for, and luckily, my colleague said, yes, this is something we do need, was our budget workshops. It's fascinating to me how the dollars that are at the county get distributed locally, and how it has been more verbal or handshake agreements, and nothing really in writing, and so there's a lack of understanding of how the dollars are distributed, where the decisions are being made, and also, we have a fiscal cliff that is coming at the county level for transportation, it's probably roughly two years away, and so what does that mean for our public transportation? And so we will be having budget workshops, we will have two this fiscal year, and then a final one in fall, in which we will really have a deepening understanding, and so I would encourage folks to come to those budget workshops, especially if you're interested next year in taking over for YTD, so that you can immediately have some level of understanding, because it really is complex. In addition to that, we talked about STIP funding, and so the Committee Mayor that you sat on regarding what that would look like, we now have dollars that will be coming, state-level dollars, that will be distributed differently than they have been distributed ever, and so the county will have dollars that will come to it, that, right now, we are currently trying to decide at the county level, both within our cities, as well as at YTD, how we will go about getting access to those funds, will it be competition, a competitive process locally, and then a competitive process at the CACOG level as well, and so had a great conversation there. Lastly, we did have Mike, and thank you so much, talk about that we will have what's called a staging, which is kind of cool for the transit center, and so that what is essentially an open house, really is meant for our county supervisors, as well as our Woodland colleagues, to see what would it be like to have a transit center on a main street in their city, and so it would be right where the old courthouse used to be, and what that would be like to have potentially four buses at one time, picking up folks, and would that disrupt traffic too much, would that be a danger? And so getting a genuine feel of what that would look like. The reason why this is so important is, for so many people, public transportation is not something necessarily that they're choosing, it is something that they have to take, and right now, the Transit Center in Woodland is in a place that, quite frankly, is an abandoned mall that is sometimes dangerous. Recently, in the past six months, the Police Department in Woodland has done a good job of trying to up their surveillance and their, and their presence there, but quite frankly, we have had folks that are taking public transportation there be attacked, and other things have happened, and again, those are the, that's what happens when you have an abandoned place and you don't have a lot of activity. And so we are really, really hopeful, this is a project that YTD has worked on for six years, it's been in the hopper, and so my fingers are crossed that as Chair, I will be able to significantly move the needle and get a transit center moved to a place that is more safe.
Mike? Any other update?
Have a quick one, Mayor. I attend the Yolo Salona Air Quality Management District meeting on January eighth in Davis, and we welcomed new Board Members Supervisor Sheila Allen of Davis, and Vice Mayor of Rio Vista Edwin Okamura. The new Chair for the 2025 Yolo Salona Air Quality Management District is Supervisor Lucas Frarics, and the Vice Chair is Councilmember James Ernst of Dixon. Board Members receive their committee assignments, and I was reappointed to the budgets and audit, as well as to the technical review committee, so it's basically oversight of projects and monitoring risks. Also, Carl Moyer Program is, which provides monetary grants to private companies and public agencies to clean up their heavy-duty engines beyond what's required by law, through retrofitting, repowering, and replacing old engines with newer and cleaner ones. These grants are there, and a lot of times, West Sacramento has received funding through our school buses, Washington Unified School District, but we also have new grants, there's an amendment to the Carl Moyer Program, where communities such as those on Native American lands, as well as those disadvantaged communities, will also be able to apply for some of these monies, and as Yolo Salona Air Quality Management District allocates these, we're going to be seeing some really good things in West Sacramento.
Member, Councilmember Akala, yes? Councilmember... Mayor Pro Tem Sopizio Hall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In 2024, I had the pleasure of serving as Chair of the Yellow Habitat Conservancy. We had, our last meeting of the year, December ninth, and probably my last meeting as Chair, was very administrative-heavy, but we are going through a staff transition right now, and so we appointed Christine Alvert as our interim Executive Director, while the county does some reevaluating what that role looks like, and what departments we get pulled from to actually manage the organization, and then we approve some contracts as well.
Mike? With that, this Friday, I'll be in DC, the US Conference Mayor, serving as Vice Chair of the Children's Health and Human Services Committee, so I'm looking forward to that. We are looking to see what administrative changes will occur in impacting the Children's Health and Human Services, and I'll also sit on the Housing Task Course, Housing and Homelessness Task Course, and the Mayor's and Business Partners Committee, so we'll be receiving updates throughout the weekend, and I'll be able to report back what happened. And I've recently been appointed to the Climate Services Advisory Committee, it's a federal advisory committee for the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, so I'm looking forward to serving on that. You know, present any updates, I know it's not our regular committee assignment, it's a great opportunity to show what's at the federal level. And council calendar is attached, are there any, is there any calendar reports?
Yeah, good evening, I don't think it's on the council calendar that's attached, but just a reminder, tomorrow is the West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce Installation Dinner, and that starts at 5:30, and it's here in City Hall in the Galleria, thank you.
For now? Oh, sure, go ahead.
So MLK March is actually January 20th. We, at one point, had the largest MLK March in California, which is pretty amazing, they meet at Sac City Community College, the march, I think, begins at 8:00 AM, and folks typically start milling in around 7:30 AM, I think it's a four-mile march. I will be bringing my daughter's Jack and Jill group with us to march and learn about the importance of what Dr. King stood for. A lot of our colleagues, our council members, I will see them out there, whether, not just from Sacramento, from Elk Grove, from all the regions, I would encourage everyone to come out, it really is a beautiful moment.
Thank you. And City Manager Report?
Yes, just wanted to give a brief update on some leadership staff changes, that mostly you're already aware of these, but just to recap, you'll remember at our last meeting of the new, of the previous year, John Robinson, our former Deputy City Manager, retired at the end of the year, Doug Drozd, who's still here, is now in the role of Deputy City Manager, with some slight changes organizationally in terms of the role itself, IT, for example, is now under our Assistant City Manager Amanda, Doug has retained his Government Affairs role, so that's something he carried with him to the Deputy City Manager role, otherwise, it's largely the same position, and also, Kaissa Miller, who most of you know, I think, is now in, sort of in Doug's old position, still, you know, doing a lot of the same things, and will be taking on some new responsibilities as well, so stay tuned for more info on that, I think I've made clear that anything you used to send to John, you now send to Doug, so just know that going forward. Also, on the flood protection side, Greg Faben, who, if you had a chance to ever serve on the West Safa Board, you know, he also retired at the end of the year after... after, similar to John, thirty-plus years, I believe, of, of service to the city for Greg. Uh, so another very long-tended employee with huge contributions to the, the city on multiple fronts, not just on flood protection, but he formerly served in Public Works roles and other parts of the organization, so we'll, we'll miss him as well. Um, that division is now under the Capitol Projects Department, which is Ariana is the Director of that department. And just recently, we announced that Paul Dirksen, who most of you know as well, had been hired as the new Flood Protection Manager there. So, if you're on the West Safco Board, expect to see more of Paul in that role. And then finally, this one is more recent, Bill Roberts, who is our current Public Works Operations and Maintenance Director of that department, he, he is retiring, again, after a very long career in, in both public service, the cities, worked in Sacramento for most of his career, has been the Director of the Department here since its inception about five and a half years ago. Also, uh, you know, decorated military service as a two-time combat veteran, and so, really long, distinguished career of public service from Bill. Uh, we'll definitely miss him, and, and his retirement is officially next week. Uh, we'll be doing a recruitment for that position. It'll be an external recruitment. We hope to get someone who will be a good leadership representative for the operations side of the public works function of the city. Uh, but in the meantime, I want to make sure that we have a, a good leader in that department who can not just represent them at the executive level, but can keep the momentum going on Measure O. Obviously, you know, roads is a huge part of that, and, and, uh, we want to make sure that their, their requests are carried forward with, you know, the, the best, best way possible. So, Ariana is actually going to be the interim Director of that department as well, so she's going to retain her current role as Director of Capitol Projects, but for the time being, will be the interim Director of Public Works O&M until we can hire a new director. So, just be aware of that as well. And that's all. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead. Thank you. Uh, Erin, will there be another meeting where Bill Roberts will be President?
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that part. We're in, we're in contact with Bill about, you know, uh, hi- his, you know, his plans, and so, we want to make sure that we honor him appropriately, so whether it's at a future meeting or in another venue, we'll keep you posted about the plans for that.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
City Attorney Report?
Nothing to report.
And Staff Direction from City Councilmembers? I do have requests. I think we, Doug and I have had a chance to meet the Navy people, and what we're looking for are ideas for Navy Week between March 13th, March 17th, and the 23rd. They would like to do service in the community, so if there are any project ideas, what we're looking at is maybe Sacramento Yacht Club event, you know, Navy Career Day, Ted Adoption, you know, event. I'm having a high school student who's been asking, you know, to provide any kind of help with me, and I've given this project over to her to contribute. So, Ishiel is working on some of these ideas, Sacramento River Cleanup, your Rotary Club. Also do, you know, have project ideas that you could maybe partner during that week, though. So, again, Doug is helping to coordinate that, and Ishiel is helping and assisting my efforts, we, community members do some work. So, I just wanted to bring that.
So, Madam Mayor, I'll just mention, I'm the PR Chair for the Sacramento Yacht Club, so if you're not working with anybody directly, I'm happy to help with any communication there.
Okay, future addenda, item requests, which will also include, they'd like to have a proclamation, so we will recognize them through a... And, is it me, anybody else? Accept a motion to adjourn?
Oh, a- a- actually, um, I know that with everything in your, in your job-job, I think maybe could we end in a moment of silence for what's happening in LA? I know it's, it's touching you personally and professionally, and it's probably touching all of us, but you probably are feeling a...
Yes, so much. A moment of silence here? Thank you, Councilmember, for those that have passed away, for those that have lost homes, that are struggling. Pull it, pull it together. It's been a really tough time in LA County. Thank you so much. Adjourn?
I'll second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Akala?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sopizio Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. We are now adjourned.